Hello, everybody. I now call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. It is 6:16 and six out of seven of us are here. But we will go ahead and enter into executive session under O R S 192 dot 6602 H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. It's seven o'clock and we are now going to move into regular session. We have the agenda review. Would somebody like to propose a motion?
Having no issues with the agenda, I move that we approve the agenda as published.
Seconded.
So we moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as published. Dan, would you call the vote?
Yes. Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
And I'm not sure if Lori, there's Lori. Lori?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. Number five is the consent agenda. Would somebody make a motion around that?
Yeah, I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as published. Go ahead, Dan. I don't think we're going to discuss that.
Janet?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right. Number six on the agenda tonight is our discussion items. And the first discussion item is the polling data presentation. The presenter is Jeremy Wright of Wright Public Affairs.
So we'll wait for Daniel to let him in and Jeremy's going to be going over with you more or less the executive summary of all the raw data. So I've had a chance to dive into it. Patinkin Research took us through, again, their methodology and how they collected the information. It was done over three days and her sample size was over 400. So that is an enormous sample size for a district the size of Silver Falls. So that's good, too. And we tried to put it in a format that's easiest to read. I will say in the data that there's nothing in the data that completely shocked me at all. I don't think there was anything mysterious about it. There were a couple of points I think Jeremy will touch on that are areas we want to focus, especially for me as superintendent where it's really helpful for me to know where to focus my time because, of course, this endeavor will undoubtedly be the heaviest lift for us this school year. Any questions on that before we start?
I am not seeing him in the waiting room. Give him a minute or if we need to, I could always go into my goals to save time and if he shows up. He's in Forest Grove right now, so he knows. We sent him the link and confirmed this morning.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that then. Let's go ahead and switch to superintendent goals.
Daniel's going to come out and we're still messing with the recipe here, so we need to figure out how we can get that over there to make it easier on our IT specialist here. Although Daniel's getting his steps in when he does that.
You get a long enough cord and it can be over there.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
Those are solvable problems.
Exactly. We're also trying to make this experience easier on you as board members so you don't have to squint because I can't see the screen and I have to crane my neck even to see up there. So if this works, great. If not, we'll try something else. We are updating the projector so it'll be much brighter, but I just wanted to try this out to see if this helps you all, just like we would in any classroom for our kids.
And before you start, Scott, Dan, I was, I'm having technical difficulties again and so I've turned the Zoom off. Can you make sure you let me know if we have board members that are online that are trying to?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
So if you could do me a favor like we did last time, could you pull up the presentation that I sent out this morning? I just want to have it in front of you there because I'll have you click on a link that'll just make it even clearer to you so you don't have to squint. It's also easier to follow along if you have it in front of you. Normally, I'd be up talking to you. It is very difficult for me to present while I'm sitting down, as you know, but I think, given the fact we have two board members online, this is probably the best we can And if you click to the first slide, which is Scott's Mills, and look up, I'll know you're ready. All right. So I just wanted to start out today and want to make sure that Lori and Janet can see this. Can you both see this?
Thumbs up from Janet.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. So I want to start out by just bringing our attention back to kids and this will be a regular thing that I like to do. And this week, I just wanted to mention a huge or give a huge shout out to our folks at Scott's Mills K eight. If you have not been there recently, I really encourage you to reach out to Kirsten Jorgensen, the principal, or if you'd ever like to go with me. Scott's Mills K eight is truly a wonderful place to be. And I say that and more specifically, everywhere you look at Scott's Mills, you will see evidence that kids are loved. That is the main thing that I look for when I go into any school in any district is what is the evidence that tells me that kids are loved here? Because if they're loved, then everything else is a detail. And Scott's Mills has so many really neat things going on. I was walking classrooms with Kirsten last week and she was pointing out, of course, what her school is doing, implementing the expectations that we have in all of our schools around social emotional learning, teaching kids self-regulation skills, teaching kids how to get along on the playground, teaching kids how to solve a problem, those sorts of things. And it was really, really neat to see. But if you just walk the building, you can see all these different areas that actually mean something to our community and to our students there that all conote this idea that all kids are loved. And so I just wanted to start out with that. Today was invite your mom, dad, grandpa, uncle, or other extended family member to go to P E class with you. And you see Helen Plav there. Helen, in my 25-year career, I've only met a few teachers that are as extraordinary as Helen Plav. She's a real treat to be around. And the most amazing thing is that she's an incredible P E teacher. I'm just in awe when I see that. She kids me because I don't wear my running shoes when I visit her class. But the other thing, she is a very gifted math teacher, too. So that combination is very rare, let alone her leadership and all of that. So I just wanted to start off with a big shout out to Scott's Mills. And I went to a listening session at Scott's Mills last September, late September, and that experience changed, really changed me as an educator, just having the whole community there and, of course, the whole town of Scott's Mills. And so I just wanted to make sure I gave them a shout out. So getting into the really interesting stuff, which is my goals this year, my professional goals, I want to go through those with you tonight, want to answer any questions that you have because these goals are different than maybe what you've seen in the past. The way that we are moving as a district to set goals around action-oriented goals, not talk-oriented goals, there's a huge difference between the two, and I want to walk you through that. But first, I just want to bring your attention back to our strategic plan. This is the exact strategic plan that our community came up with. It's just in a format that's easier to read. It's more of a visual, one-pager, real simple, but it describes everything that's in the multi-page strategic plan that is on our website. And of course, up here in the mission statement, what are the first two words that you see there?
Working together.
Working together, which will conote what word that we say here that we're focused on?
Teamwork.
Teamwork. So we're focused on teamwork. See, it's right there in our mission statement. And so, of course, our vision is that our kids lead, being able to lead a successful life. And I would also say that another way to say that is that our kids, when they leave us, when they leave our K-12 system, they have options available to them. They have choices to make, which is important, that their choices aren't being made for them because of something we didn't do, but they have options and they're able to advocate for themselves. And so I want to start and ground ourselves with the strategic plan because what you should see in my goals is a direct connection to our strategic plan and then down to our focus, which we set each year. So strategic plan for five years, 2020, 2025, then down to the focus, which is a yearly effort. We focus what we're going to work on in Silver Falls for this year, which will get us closer to realizing the vision in 2025. And what you see is the same three topics there, but what we're really talking about and connecting those two is the student experience. That really is the only reason why we should even be here in Silver Falls, working or volunteering. It should always be 100% about our kids and no one else. And so I just want to draw your attention there because it may look simple, but there's a lot of thought that goes behind this. And of course, you all know the analogy of the flywheel. I don't need to go over that, but what drives all of this, what will drive all of our success in Silver Falls is that we must work together. We cannot tolerate divisions in our school district. We must all believe in the goal and even though if we don't agree with every little bit of it, we're willing to support it. I think that's a huge, huge factor. And then, of course, no change happens in the universe at any biological level without feedback. Feedback is what we thrive on as humans. It's what makes us better and stronger. So those are the two main focuses that I want to hit tonight, and those will be a huge focus for us this school year. And if you sat through my leadership presentation at the Leadership Institute, you already know that well. My goals are here. I don't expect you to read those right now. You've seen them in the updates that I've been putting out the last two or three weeks. And I'm going to go over each one of them with you. So I just put this up here to show you that they are on one page. I tried to make it as straightforward as possible and trying to incorporate all the little things that go into what the writing of my goals would look like. And so before I get into that, I want to go over some really important context. This will give you a couple of things to think about as I go through my goals with you. So the first one, obviously, is that you see three goals there for 2022, 2023. Each goal can be connected back to one of the three goals in the strategic plan. So that's what you should be seeing as a board from your superintendent. So we set this strategic plan as a community, the board approved it, the superintendent's charge is to implement the strategies outlined in the strategic plan to reach the vision. And now we're here at my goals. I set the focus, now we're here at my goals. So you see that in the first two bullet points. The third bullet point is really important, that the goals are written in a theory of action format. A theory of action format is just really a fancy word for saying, I have a hypothesis and I have this set of strategies that I'm going to use and I'm going to get these outcomes. And really, we're outcome-based here, you and me as a board. You want your employee to come back with outcomes for you, to show you that we are making progress and realizing the vision for Silver Falls. And so the way we do that is with an if-then statement. If I do this, then I do that. Or if the teacher does this, then the kids do that. So it's very similar in the way that we give feedback to staff as well. And then the fourth bullet point, I just went over that. It's just a hypothesis on outcomes, given a set of focused strategies. And the most important part about a theory of action is to realize that it is action-oriented, not talk-oriented. Action-oriented, not talk-oriented, because talk is cheap. And we have a lot of folks that are deeply involved in this kind of stuff with wordiness but don't have a lot of outcome to show for it. So I'm not here to waste your time and to fill up this presentation with all sorts of fancy aspirational goals. I'm going to walk you through exactly what I think can be achievable this year and what success will look like. And so I want to do that now, but before I do that, do you have any questions? Before I start on the first goal, I also want to mention how appreciative I've been for Aaron Cook, Jennifer, to some extent, helping Aaron transition into this work. But Aaron has been a real thought partner, a real guide for me. Both of us have been very open to each other's suggestions and I can't thank you enough, Aaron, for that. I think that our first order of business as a board superintendent team is to model the behavior that we expect from those that we lead. And for me, Aaron, that's been a really great example that we set together and just wanted to make sure I mentioned that. So for goal number one, if you pull that up in front of you, you might get a better view, but I'm going to read these goals to you because they're very important. So you don't have to read along with me. You can listen or you can read along on your laptop. So goal number one, to improve the academic experience for all students in Silver Falls School District. That's the main idea. And so the theory of action goes, if I hold myself and our district level and school level administrators accountable for providing and for responding to consistent, specific, and descriptive feedback for and from their respective teams and staffs, then the experience of our students will improve proportionally as the knowledge and skills of our administrators, our teachers, and our support staff deepen. So there is a lot there to think about, and a lot went into forming this goal around the idea of feedback, because nothing improves as an organization unless that's present. And that's my job as a CEO of the organization to ensure that that feedback is happening. Otherwise, we cannot expect systems-level improvement in our school district, and we want our community to build its confidence in us at all levels. And so that's the main idea is the academic experience. Our key strategy for that, of course, is implementing a guaranteed and viable curriculum, which I've worked on since the day I've got here, and our principals are hard at work with as instructional leaders. And just to show you what those outcomes might look like, if you could go to this slide, that would be helpful because I know that that's too hard to read. But if you could go there, and I'm going to give you about a minute to sort of look through that, if you will, just read it through and then I'll pick back up on it. It would be fine. Okay, so you see this broken out into two sections. The first section on the left, the header says?
Adult actions.
Adult actions. So we want to be really specific with what we're talking about, and that is that if we are going to improve with feedback, it's going to come through adult actions. And so you see that there. And if you read through that, if you're an educator or if you're an instructional leader, all this kind of makes sense, but it's really educational ease. I don't expect you to know every bit of it, but I can tell you that this work specifically is at a whole nother level than most districts are used to. So that list of five things has taken us two years to get to this point. So this is not something you can implement in year one of trying to build a guaranteed and viable curriculum. This is a year three set of adult actions. And so more importantly, on the right-hand side of the adult actions, you see the results indicators. That is really, really important for the board to have an idea about because that's what I'm going to come to you when I do my check-in and when I do my year-end evaluation to show you evidence of that. So it's one thing just to say it, but in my presentation back to you, I will take each one of these and I will show you exactly what evidence I can provide that will tell you that I have, that I'm on the right track with those results indicators and on the right track for meeting my goal. Some of you might wonder, why is there not a numeric number attached or a metric attached to that? And the simple answer is, we don't have any data to use. State testing data is totally useless because it's not reliable because of our low participation rates. Our parents did not want their children taking the test last year because we were still in COVID, so we don't have any reliability there. There might be some themes that we can draw from it, but for me, sharing it with you as a board, that would be appropriate data to share with you as a board. State testing data as a district, not school by school, but as a district, as a system, that's the data I would share with you. We wouldn't be able to derive anything. We also do not have consistency in testing environments, things like that. There are too many variables that we can't pin down to really zero in on what happened. When we look at other sources of data, information, what we really want are common assessments so we can ascertain the differences between what we thought we taught and what kids actually learned. It's really as simple as that. What did we intend to teach versus exactly what did kids learn? And so we are in the initial stages of building common assessments, which is, puts us in about the top 1% of districts in Oregon that are making a system-wide effort to have a consistent language to where teacher teams can come together and develop teaching and learning around children's needs based on the set of facts that they have. And each teacher would give the same assessment written to the standard that they mapped. And having that uniformity will give us a language where we can start talking about exactly how do we zero in on each kid and their needs, especially now when kids have had a two-year dent put in their education. That's a whole other thing that we all know about. The other thing I wanted to say about guaranteeing a viable curriculum and the adult actions here, what makes this so rare, what makes this so rare to be in this spot with these goals right now is that we never let the pandemic be an excuse for not doing what we are trained to do, which is to lead instruction. And so we have spent two years of enormously hard work by our teacher teams, by our facilitators, by our director of teaching and learning to get to a place where we have a K-12 map curriculum, all subject areas in secondary, and literacy in grades K through five. We'll be working on math next in elementary, can only do one at a time. And we're starting to build assessments as well. And so by the end of this year, what will be a magical step is to end the unit mapping process, which was originally only going to take one year, but we extended it to two because of the pandemic. So I think that's really key to understand as board members, because for somebody like me, I run in those circles, so I have a really good idea of what other districts are doing. You have to know that this is extremely rare to do systems-level work like this, especially given a worldwide shutdown for the past two years. And so I hope that these actions and results indicators make some sense to you that you can connect to, but I'd really like to open it up to any questions you might have. One of the things I will say is that feedback here, this slide is oozing feedback. Every single one of those points is grounded in the concept of feedback, so just want to open it up for questions.
I have a question about the bolded items.
Yes.
Number two and number three. What was your intention?
The bolding is really for me, that's all units provided with principal feedback. Providing feedback to instructional units, providing feedback for instructional units is a very, very difficult task if you're not used to it. It's not easy because you have to be one step ahead of your teacher teams to understand what the standards are, what good instruction would look like to those standards, and be looking for some of the things that would reflect the PD that we've had in terms of engagement strategies and so forth. So we have a formula for that. Each of our administrators is hooked up with an executive coach that walks them through exactly how to give that feedback to teacher teams who have developed the units. That's what an instructional leader does. They keep a handle on what's going on in the school that the teacher teams are developing, and then they're able to give feedback because of their knowledge of curriculum and instruction as well. So that's why it's also highlighted because that's one of the most important pieces that we're striving for this year, that all of our instructional leaders feel comfortable in that process. And that's the main thing, that they're comfortable of going through it repetition-wise with their coach, with us as an administrator team, and they actually get to a point of automaticity where the units are being done and the feedback is being given timely. So what we don't want to have happen is for a teacher team to develop a unit, not get feedback for some time, and then when they do get feedback, they figured out they made a bunch of mistakes where now they're, it's taking up a lot more of their time. So we want to help teachers get to a point with unit mapping to where all they have to do for the next unit is pull out the next unit. It's already done. They don't ever have to go through the process again. The process that becomes, how do we refine the units for the next year? And we have a whole process for that as well, but it's all based on feedback. Any questions there?
No, Scott, you mentioned the lack of standardized testing. And, you know, this is all internal educator speak and testing is a few. When do you think we'll have standardized testing that can be reported back out to the public?
Yes.
Because, you know, I tend to, I hear lots of criticisms of those tests and I tend to agree with those, but it is a snapshot that you can report back to the public.
Yes, absolutely.
Like I say, this is so our kids know.
Yep.
And so I just kind of curious.
No, I'm glad you brought that up, Tom. I would say this year is a huge year. This year is a huge year because we will have ensured consistency in our testing environments. We will have ensured consistency to our implementation of projection maps, which will let us know exactly where each of our schools are in terms of hitting these standards on time. So by the time the test is given, that that curriculum, those standards have been taught. So that piece is new, too. As a system, we can ensure that the content has been taught before the test has been given. That's huge. So that's why this year will be huge, Tom. In the spring, when, late spring, when kids take this test, the results from that are what you should be really interested in seeing. Okay. And that's how you will judge me as well, to see whether or not these types of things are taking hold. My view has always been, we don't focus on state testing and we don't focus on it for really good reason, because state testing supposedly tests state standards. Well, here, we're implementing a standards-based framework. So if we can ensure that our system is geared towards implementing a standards-based guaranteed and viable curriculum with connected assessments that test whether or not kids learn the subject matter and what do we do for kids who didn't, then the rest will take care of itself. So we don't need to talk about wins and losses. The rest will take care of itself. So that's really the philosophy behind that, too. Tom, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you'll have something to, we'll have something to report back out to the public.
Now, the data is still data, so, and it's free to everybody. I believe by now, if not the next month, they'll release it. I've seen it. You know, for me, it's to be expected, given what went on and all the things we You know, for me, it's, it's to be expected, given what went on and all the things we could not control. But we could control our adult actions in terms of how do we set up our system as adults to handle the needs that kids are coming to us with.
Yes.
Because you need to hear this from me as a superintendent. We need to change. We need to change, given the needs that our kids are showing up to us with. The school district does not, does not stay the same. We get better. And, and that's just a universal fact of, of any organization. For us to think any differently, that the kids have to change to whatever norms we set up here, I don't see how kids can learn in that type of an environment effectively. So we need to really set up the system so we can take kids in, know exactly where they are and how do we differentiate our instructions so they meet the standard. Anyway, I could literally teach a semester-long course, I feel like, on this subject alone. Does anybody have a, another question for me?
I mean, I guess I'll, like, it's kind of fallen off. So, so is it essentially, you know, I think you're, to simplify it.
Sure.
You know, you're gonna, we've got our own set of standards and the way you do things. And then whenever the kids encounter some, whatever random standardized test, state, whatever, they'll do fine at it, but they're not going to be taught to that one.
Well, I.
To this and they'll do.
Yes, we don't.
It'll take care of itself, the, the way you said, which, which I get, I.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
I'm, I'm less of a fan and I'm not, I'm not at the building level anymore, but I'm less of a fan of teaching to the test or teaching testing procedures or any of that.
Yes.
Because if we embed that in our instruction, the rest will take care of itself.
Right.
I, and I have lived this myself as an instructional leader and seen the power of it. And like I said in my, in my story to you during the Leadership Institute, that took six years. This stuff takes a while, but it didn't take six years to start seeing it in the data. It did for us to really move from, from a really good school to a really great one. And that's what we intend to do as a school district as well.
And I just wanted to mention that the things that, the common assessments that the staff develop can test a lot deeper than a multiple-choice test. So it's great that they're getting a chance to show their skills in a more in-depth way, I guess.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. Using standardized test scores to change our adult actions is a terrible way to use those test scores. Those test scores are meant for you. That's what they're meant for. They're meant for policymakers. They're not meant to drill down on what the need is of an organization that's going to come up with anything meaningful. And I'm just speaking frankly from experience as well. State test scores are really for our public and our policymakers. And that's why any data that I bring you will be district-level data. We're not going to get into comparing schools and all of that. That just doesn't make any sense at all. But all that, all that information is public to you. And of course, I can always provide you with that as well. So to answer your question, Tom, the thinking is, I, and I truly believe this, everything will take care of itself if we just focus on doing the foundational right things.
Yeah. No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm with you. I just want to make sure that there's something public facing coming forward.
Sure.
That's my question.
And if we had, if we had test scores from last year, we had participation rates in the high 90s, I'd be sharing that with you right now.
Right, they're, they're not.
Yeah. And what I'd like to do is get to a point where we're setting goals, SMART goals, based on how our kids are doing in their common assessments as a district. And then as a teacher, they would work as a teacher team on something different, but that I would be able to show you the themes that are happening, happening on a dashboard, given how our students are doing on tests written to the standards.
So I've got a question, well.
Sure, Jonathan.
I guess it's a question. And a comment. I really like the idea that there's so many results indicators. They may not have specific numbers, but you can tell based on what's written and how you're speaking that you're totally taking accountability for this, right? I mean, this is, this is what you believe will make a difference and by golly, that's what we're going to try to do. One of my questions, and it's not mentioned in here exactly directly, is initially there was a lot of apprehension among the teaching staff. How, where's that at now? And how do we measure whether we are in a position of buy-in? Whether we're still in a position of apprehension? Where, where is that and how do we measure that?
Well, I think, you know, at least in my estimation, I'd, I'd like to get Dan's take from his, his outside view of what he's seeing. I don't think there's any question, if you talk to somebody in this district who's a, a teacher or that works in a classroom, that this isn't the right work. Because there is a Titanic amount of research that says that it is. And so, but we also have to keep in mind, we had to do this work during the pandemic. And so what we really want to do is to get our teachers to a better place so they can start seeing the fruits of their labor, which is why we focus so hard on teamwork. So teachers are working within their teacher teams. So, and I believe I have it listed here. Maybe it's in the other slide. That one of the results indicators I would, I would want to see is, do teachers feel a sense of ownership around this work? I can tell you, because I've lived this work as a practitioner in doing this work, we are right on course. We are. Everybody's always at a different level of what they like and dislike. For me as a teacher, I really dislike the planning phase because I couldn't get my head around something. I needed to be in front of kids to try it out. So of course, there are some frustrations. You all know teachers here too, so I would encourage you to speak to them as well. It's always great to establish reality from multiple points of view. But I think the, the most important question, Jonathan, is, is this the right work? And I've never seen another model that's anywhere near as effective as this one here. Because it's really straightforward. It really is not rocket science. It's that we're really focusing on what the outcome should be and we're backwards mapping that all the way to the first year of implementation. And now we're in, you're going into year three. Does that make sense?
I think my add-on, if you want me to add to that, I think the areas as far as getting that teacher buy-in, I think if you look at the number of teachers that signed up for a summer assessment cadre, you know, during that summertime, was, was a good, solid number of teachers that did that. There was actually some other opportunities with partnering with other districts that we were hoping to get even more to that were interested in doing that. So that's always a good indicator that there's some enthusiasm to do something during the summer. The other thing is when the ongoing, when we do some of those trainings, there's always like exit tickets or response, response to feedback. And then there are always really, there's always an outlier or two that's kind of, you know, one or two in every group that maybe it wasn't as meaningful for them. But there's always either really good questions, really positive comments. So looking at those things, I think overall, like Scott was talking about, I think it's always a when issue. Is, is this the right time? That's always going to be the kind of our biggest competing factor because teachers are working incredibly hard. And so it's kind of always going to feel like maybe this isn't the right time. But when they get in there and do the work, the feedback's always really positive and, and I think in most cases, it's really just trying to get, get the, when teams of teachers work together, then that's where the power and synergy comes into because they do like collaborating if they're on a highly, on a highly effective team.
And I've provided that feedback every time we have it. I serve it up to you in the form of the board updates with attachments. I have another round coming to you from last Wednesday, which was kicking off our first PD for professional learning communities for our teacher teams. I was at the K-8 one and I have feedback from that. We had seven, about 70 of our teachers there, so almost, almost everyone. And so it's more that anecdotal evidence of, of really reading through every teacher's comments. We do that after every single training, just like I did at the end of the Leadership Institute.
Thank you.
Dan, anybody online have their hand up?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
All right. So we can, we'll move on to, we'll move on to the goal that addresses social emotional learning, which is goal number two in our strategic plan. So if we create a system-wide infrastructure, utilize norms that support collaborative decision-making and consistently collect common behavioral and academic data, then all schools in Silver Falls School District will respond to students' academic and social emotional needs with a universal and uniform process. So in, in educational leaves, we call this MTS-S, multi-tiered system of support. Because although we're working on a really strong core academic program that all kids get, regardless of teacher, regardless of school, it's not the educational lottery. You know, you get a great teacher, great, if not, you're out of luck, you know, or school or so on. It's, it's, we're building a, a system here so that it has a strong core. But that works for 85% of learners. 85% of learners respond really well to a strong core academic program. That means the state standards, not, not a lot of extra supports, just what the teacher is giving in terms of good differentiation strategies, engagement strategies to a class. We see the 85%, and that's a really, really solid number. 85% in any school age population should be responding to the core. But what do we do for the other 15%? Well, that's not good enough. Well, the first question we got to ask is, is the core solid? So if you asked me, if we were in a different school district and you asked me, Scott, can you show me the promise that you've made to the community that all standards will be taught in a given school year at each grade level or subject area? Well, in this case, I'd be able to point you right to it on our projection map. And then I could, we could go to any school you want and go to any classroom and see that teachers have planned instruction around those standards. And so that's really important because that question must be answered before you get to goal number two. You cannot start working on interventions until you have built a solid core program from a system standpoint. Because you don't know if a system's healthy. You first have to ascertain at a systems level whether or not the system is healthy. And so right now, we're in our third year building a strong core. Right now, I would also say that this is the first major step we're taking towards a multi-tiered system of support. All of our schools do something in terms of intervention, by the way. It's not that we, we don't meet kids where they're at. That's, that's not it at all. But from a system standpoint, how do we get really good? Where every six weeks, six to eight weeks, we're taking a look at the common assessment data and we're figuring out who got it or who got it and who needs more, right? Who got it and then who didn't? And what is our plan going forward for the next unit? That is key and essential to school improvement. And that's what makes our implementation so different from many of the others that are going on right now. And it's taken us two years to get to this point where this is our first full year putting our, our focus, our district's focus on building that framework of a multi-tiered system of support. So if you go to the next, if you go to the accompanying slide where it has adult actions and results indicators, I'm just going to give you a, a chance to skim that real quick. You'll notice COC is code of conduct. PBIS is something you're probably familiar with. It's a positive behavior framework that we use. And SWISS is our data collection system for office discipline referrals, which is new. And if you just look up when you're ready, I'll know you're, you're ready to move on. The key word in the goal is infrastructure. That is the key word. Infrastructure is vital. It's the same thing, exact same thing as a strong foundation for a house. It's no different. If you build your house on sand, you're not going to have a house very long. But if you build it on a solid concrete foundation and, and it's been properly surveyed and leveled and, then you're probably going to be looking at a house that's going to last a lifetime. And that's where we're at now. We must build the infrastructure. And again, we're going in the third year of that. But if you see on the results indicators, this year is our first year for really focusing on our student code of conduct so that it's implemented consistently. We've had other, other reference guides for school rules and all of that, but there's a wide-ranging variability on interpretation of what that looked like. So, and that more came in the form of rules and consequences. So the code of conduct that our teacher, that our work group, and Janet was a part of this, developed is far more comprehensive and, and really takes into account the context of the situation. And I've, of course, I've gotten to know each of you very well over my past two years here. And I know that a few of you have gone through some experiences yourselves as parents where maybe the context wasn't taken into account. And, and that is really, really important. Zero tolerance policies do not work. They do not work unless it has to do with something really, really egregious. And that would include law enforcement and other things like that. But threatening kids and just basing everything on consequences, you do this or else, will never work. And especially won't work with the type of profile of kid that we serve now in 2022. If it still worked like it did in 1950, then maybe we'd still use it. But it doesn't. And again, it's along the lines of we have to change. Just like in coaching, when you see coaching out here on the high school football field, you don't see coaches that are yelling. I've never seen it. I saw Coach Craig, had the, a real pleasure watching him. And now with our new football coach and his coaches on his staff, you don't see that anymore. Kids are spoken to in, in a very professional way. And that's what kids respond to now. So just know that, that work in a consistent code of conduct is way more than just developing a list of rules to follow. There's a, a lot more that goes into that. And then what happens when a rule gets broken? Well, that's a whole nother area that we want to address also. So how do we make it a learning experience if it calls for that? And how do we make it right? How do we teach our kids to make something right when they've done someone wrong or done the community wrong? There's, there's a process for that and we're here as coaches to model that for them. And that's the reason why you see in bold there, the modeling piece, that school board, administration, teachers and staff model respectful, positive and productive interactions for students and adults. The entire Silver Falls community is watching the aid of us and watching how we respond to their feedback and to the feedback of our students. Does anybody have any questions? I, I, my hope is that you see under results indicators a glaring evidence of what infrastructure would look like. So we can't have behavior data unless we have a solid foundation in a student code of conduct. And we can't measure the implementation of a student code of conduct without a universal office, office discipline referral, which we've never had. And so this is the first year that we are implementing a, a universal office discipline referral that was also developed by a work group led by Leslie Roach.
Questions?
You'll also see in there how important it is to celebrate small wins along the way and, and celebrate the fact that we, we model what we expect. And we'll know if we're on the right track if our experiences interacting with our teachers and our staff are positive when we're talking about our students, which largely they are. This is a very special district as far as that's concerned. Okay. Moving on to the third goal. And of course, you know, the third goal is all around facilities and the key strategy for, for the facilities. And the key strategy for the facilities issue is the bond. Our general fund will not support the level of fixes that are needed in our district facilities with our general fund. It's a forty-three million dollar general fund. It wouldn't even scratch the surface. And eighty-five percent of our general fund is wrapped up in?
Staff.
Staffing. So it leaves very little left over for any sort of improvement. My hope is that we get, as a community, we get to a point where we clearly understand what is the responsibility of the district. And the responsibility of the district is to make sure that our facilities reflect the love and respect we have for our kids. And, you know, in many of our schools, they're surviving and they look very clean, very well taken care of because of the community. But I would like to see us as a school district taking ownership of that. But we can't do that without the willingness of our taxpayers and our voters and our stakeholders. So it's very much a symbiotic relationship. And we cannot get to a place where we truly are proud of our facilities without our public's help. And that's what we hope to achieve this school year. This will be a major, major focus of ours. We have the first bond advisory committee meeting coming up on October sixth. We have twenty-one amazing committee members, many of whom have not served on a committee yet in Silver Falls, but all represent a different area of the district. And so, and you've seen that list. The results indicator that I'm looking for that I want you to judge me by is whether or not you feel confident taking action on the bond recommendation so that we can get a bond on the ballot. Whether that's November or not is your call. That's a hundred percent your call. And I'm here as your servant, your humble servant, to provide you with any information that you need to include you on the bond advisory committee as observers and as liaisons back to your colleagues. And also, we have points in the bond advisory committee meetings where we want your participation. And I think you'll enjoy the meeting on the sixth. That, this one is the most straightforward in terms of what we want. In terms of the adult actions, well, we've done half of them already. We've hired the right experts to give us the right data.
Yeah.
And Jeremy's going to present in just a minute. And then we have Winahaw Group who's going to facilitate the meetings. And then in January, we're going to go out for another round of listening sessions. Really looking forward to that because we have a clear focus of what that's going to be. And what we want to know is whether or not the public will support the bond recommendation that the committee has been working on. What are they willing to support? And so we'll go to every single school community there. We're bringing back Jerry Colonna to help facilitate that so we can just focus on what it is that folks are saying to us. So we have a formula, obviously a successful formula to implement that we tested out last year. Any questions on this? This one's, in my opinion, pretty straightforward. Okay. And having said that, I'll take any questions about the goals in general or comments, if you wish, or before we move on, if you like.
Questions?
I think they're real straightforward and very thorough. I think, you know, that when you have goals, and I like the way you did it in your theory of action on each one. And when we were going over these initially, Scott, you had to explain this to me because it was different than the goals and objectives that I'd set with team members before and folks that I had managed over the years. But I really like how you did it because it says, okay, this is what we aspire to. And then I'm going to connect the key performance indicators, results indicators to it. So I think it's extremely thorough. You have a lot of work ahead of you. And I think the three goals are lofty and very thorough. And in my opinion, we don't need to add anything to that, in my opinion.
Thank you, Aaron.
No argument here.
Anybody else?
Nope.
I'll just add that I really like the theory of action format because it keeps you grounded in the goal, the overarching goal. And yeah, I love the way you put it as like a hypothesis. And it's really great to see that. And I really love the goal number one about feedback because that's what education is, feedback. Even if you're alone in a room, something happens and you're like, oh, that happened. That's feedback and you learn from it, you know? So I really like that focus. And I like the focus that it's a two-way street, just like we would model for our students.
Sure. And we can't give feedback to our students if we're unwilling to accept feedback from others. And so it truly is a full circle in the feedback loop. And I've gone over with you before the number one expectation we have our leaders in Silver Falls School District is that we model the giving and receiving of feedback. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And so are we ready for?
We're ready for Jeremy. So we'll go back to that agenda item.
All right. So polling data presentation up next with Jeremy Wright of Wright Public Affairs. And we do have slides that were sent to us earlier today. Hi, Jeremy.
Hello, how's everyone doing today?
We're good. How are you?
Good, good. Pardon for being, had some computer issues and restarted before it came back to you.
We were flexible and thank you for being flexible too.
Yeah, no problem.
We appreciate it, Jeremy. And Jeremy, I did brief the board on the topic and that you're going to walk us through an executive summary, which is kind of taken from the raw data that we received from Patinkin Research. And so I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Jeremy.
Jeremy. Great. Dobie, why don't you? Should be right up here. Give me a minute. I had it up and now it's showing me my. Pardon, I haven't. There we go. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so tonight, I'm going to present a survey of the survey we did for the Silver Falls School District earlier this month. And, you know, to remind you that the purpose of this survey was a temperature check of the kind of attitudes of the community towards the district. It was not bond-specific. But we asked a few questions around your facilities, and we'll get into that. But more of an attitude and just kind of where your community is right now. So jumping in, we surveyed four hundred residents of the Silver Falls School District. I want to emphasize that we, you know, we we did not just survey registered voters. We went to every, we, all residents, which is important because we'll do later surveys for you that we'll just talk to registered voters or likely voters. And then we'll do a likely voter screen if we're trying to target for a special election. But in this case, this was about getting a temperature of, you know, everyone who lives in your community, a representative sample. You know, about that representative sample, we used quotas and weights, meaning that we made sure that the four hundred residents we talked to reflected the overall demographics of your district. Stuff like about twenty-five percent were parents. It's about what it is, school district and stuff like that. We conducted those interviews September sixth to eighth. And the margin of error is about five percent, four point nine percent. And that just means that, you know, always take it a grain of salt. You see like a one percent difference between something that could just be noise, not exactly movement or statistically significant. So communication to the district. The first thing we did was talk a little bit about kind of why we think, ask people about where they get their information. So the question we had, from which of the following sources do you generally get the most news about you Silver Falls School District? The vast majority are got from neighbors, friends, and family. So it's people who get, you know, in the community. Local network TV news. They pointed out that you don't really have a local TV network news. So we think this is something a little more people giving their information probably from, you know, national news sources that they're calling local TV news. And then other sources like your online news blogs, Parents Square, Class Notes, school district websites, and stuff like that. And so when you ask the question, do you feel that what you know, I feel that you know what is happening at your local schools? Well, forty-seven percent said no. Forty-three percent said yes. So I'll emphasize that this is pretty typical just because, you know, if you're a senior or a single person, you're not exactly plugged into what's happening at a K-12 school district. So it's not, that's not, this is not unusual finding. So perception of the district and its institutions. So we asked, generally speaking, we asked them, what is your overall view of the Silver Falls School District? And the majority of parents, majority, one-third responded have net favorable perceptions of the district. So, you know, about thirty percent very, very favorable. The rest were either neutral. And then we had about twenty-one percent that had a somewhat unfavorable, a very unfavorable opinion. And then twenty-six percent just don't know. Again, these are people who, you know, just aren't plugged in with what's happening at your district. Among parents or kids currently attending Silver Falls Schools, you're doing very well. Fifty-nine percent think you're doing a favorable job. Twenty-six percent say unfavorable. So overall, generally positive impressions of the school district and very positive reviews from parents who have kids in the district. When we asked them why they feel this way, this is like an open-ended question. We just say, okay, for those who said they had favorable views, why do you feel that way? And the quality of teachers and staff was highest. They were just impressed with the school and the school district. They think you're doing a good job. Think it's a good place for kids and families, the community in general, and the school district is part of that. Provide equality education and, you know, some other things like. And so, you know, mainly though, it's your people and the district that makes up the majority of the things they're impressed with. And then we asked them, you know, you know, what makes you feel this way? For the people who were, remember, is a lower subgroup. But politics is the major driver of the negative impressions. This won't surprise you. If you, you know, follow this group, probably follows, you know, national news and media and trends more than the average person. So you're aware of the politicization of our school district, of school. And the responses here kind of play right into that, the too political, bad education and curriculum. Because some concern about financial waste and mismanagement, that's one I would keep an eye on as a school district. You know, that's, you can't do much about like the national political winds around the politics. But you can't do something about telling a story about how you manage your funds. So that third one is one I would emphasize. Same thing with poor quality educators. I would say we can, you know, continue to tell the story of the great staff you have. And interestingly, they said you're not doing a good job because you're underfunded and out of resources. Ten percent gave that answer, which is kind of a way of getting at that they actually want to support the schools, but they see it as something that needs more resources to make it a good place. And then we asked them, you know, this is a question getting in lieu into the bond territory about perceptions of facility conditions. So this is one where we ask people, do you think the school district has school buildings or in excellent physical condition, good, fair, or are they in poor physical condition? And this is one where the only one on all of our surveys, we want to see more red in terms of negative perception than blue in terms of positive. Why? Because it's a, there's generally a direct correlation between people understanding that your facilities need help and your, and the support for something like a bond, right? Because they understand the need. And so in this case, forty-four percent actually have excellent or good perception of your facilities and thirty-four percent have it poor. And among parents of Silver Falls School, we actually have a fifty-seven, thirty-nine positive to net negative. You know, we think there's a few things driving this. We had a discussion about this. I think you're, the space you're in now, the high school, that's kind of the most showcased kind of facility in your community. And people see that a lot. And so that may be driving kind of the general perception. You also, you know, work hard to keep your school facilities, your staff do, in good shape, even though they need help and are, you know, are older and don't necessarily meet all of our needs. So this is something where, you know, if we were to go forward with the bond later on in the bond program, you would want to do, this is clear path of education that we need to do. We need to, really especially among the parents, get them to understand where the need is and outside of maybe just their child's school, the overall school district. And then we asked, how satisfied is the quality of education provided? So it's a little bit different from, you think that overall it's doing a good job. We asked specifically about the quality of education. Most, and, you know, fifty-three, twenty-five said they're very satisfied, they're somewhat satisfied, compared to twenty-five percent said not too satisfied, not satisfied at all. So overall, you're doing, you're doing well. You have good community perception around the quality of education. And among current parents, you're getting high marks, seventy-two percent to twenty-seven. I know that's a C in education world, but in the polling world, that's a very good number. So I think, you know, you have clearly demonstrated to your core consumers that you're providing a quality education. And I would keep it up and continue to improve that number. I think they're still going to grow as well. And then the session of the district in terms of just community values. So what we asked was, I'm going to read you a list of words and phrases that people use to describe public school district. After each, please tell me how well you think it describes the Silver Falls School District. So that's described it very well, pretty well, not well or not well at all. So we read in these statements and then they responded. And so something I'm proud to support, you know, fifty-eight percent said that's something that describes my feeling towards it very well, pretty well. Welcomes and encourages public involvement and participation, sixty percent. That's great. An important part of our local economy, fifty-seven percent. An important part of our local community, fifty-six percent. Respects the wide range of views and values and traditions in our community, fifty-four percent. And ensures all students feel safe, included in extracurricular and classroom activities. That's fifty-five percent. So a strong majority are proud to support your schools. And they believe that you guys encourage public involvement and play an important role in the community. These are good numbers. You know, the place to grow in these, if you were to look for space, would be take that, you know, light blue area, the pretty well, and make them darker blue. And that means just continuing to build your case and build your support and do, continue to do the good work that got you these numbers. And then continuing, we asked somebody to be listed that, you know, describes. So this is the same just question, but this continues. Descriptors, does a good job providing extracurricular programs, fifty-eight. Has experienced high-quality teachers, fifty-seven. It's doing what takes to meet the needs and demands of education in the twenty-first century, fifty-seven percent. It provides students with a rich and varied selection of courses, fifty-six percent. Ensures students graduate career or college really lowest, fifty-three percent. So five percent room to grow there. But overall, these are really strong. You have eight, your community has a good perception of the high-quality education you're providing, which is a great starting point if you're thinking about, you know, going out for community support for something like a tax. And then continuing, it ensures all schools, whether in town or not, we see the resources they need. So that's obviously, I know, always a concern of some of the conversations I've had with the district. That's fifty-eight percent. Does a good job of limited resources, so doing a lot with less, fifty-five, and is a good steward of taxpayer dollars, fifty-three percent. So that's the lowest scoring number. That's always going to be lower, just in general. People, you know, are skeptical of government spending. So they're going to not, you know. But still, you're into positive there, which is, means that you've done a good job. And then finally, can be trusted to maintain school facilities, fifty-five percent. And many of its school buildings, classrooms, and facilities are outdated and in need of repair. This is one that has the lowest score. So going back to people's perceptions of your school district, you're doing it to maintaining its facilities. So they think that, you know, they're, you're, that they rate the lowest of all the descriptors[1781.17] So they think that, you know, they're, you're, that they rate the lowest of all the descriptors that your classrooms and buildings need facilities and outdated and in need of repair. So again, it shows our, our path ahead in terms of education and the community. And that's it. That's our kind of summary of the overall polling we did. I'm happy to stop and take questions and pick it up to the top and open up.
Any questions?
Is it pretty common to see all of the favorable to unfavorable ratings fall almost within the margin of error? And I mean, it was almost uniform.
Yeah. No, not all the time. Sometimes there's some, some districts where there's some certain issues over very strongly held opinions about, about you, about something you've done or something you provide or issue that will jump out, what either highly negative or highly positive. But in general, people are, you know, they're, they're viewing a lot of those issues kind of the same. You know, they either pretty, what you saw in the uniformity there was, you know, there, there's a, there's a sad segment of your population that's generally inclined to say nice things about you. And so it's, it's pretty uniform for that reason.
Other questions? What stood out to me was, were the, the two that Jeremy pointed out about perception of facilities. I wondered if Mr. Davison had seen these slides yet.
Yeah, that, that is absolutely one that I keyed in on.
I, I think, yeah, and that was what I was going to say too. I think we absolutely have some work to do on getting that, the public awareness around the dire need of all of our facilities. I think we all get stuck on seeing this building we're in right now, you know, and we forget about the middle school.
I think it's also really important to know, because Jeremy, I believe it was sixty-six percent of those who took the survey do not have kids with us.
Yeah, yeah, and that's about normal.
Yeah, that's normal. That was a learning for me.
Well, yeah, and I think it's going to be important to get, get it out to those folks that may have had kids in the district in the past. And they have a, in a mindset fifteen years ago, oh, that school looked great. You know, what are you talking about? It's fallen apart. And, and also those that haven't had ever had kids in our school that live in our community. And so I just, it tells me we have some work to do to, to get the word out, to help educate our public on how dire this is, especially for our middle school.
Yeah, it's just about the middle school that's seriously struggling. I mean, I think it's, how many buildings in this district the past five years have had a million or $2 million seismic upgrade? They've all, they've all had a facelift. They've all had, a lot of the buildings have had a fresh coat of paint. And so I think that's what a lot of folks are seeing, which is, they're, they're, they're pretty well taken care of, but, but, but the middle school, you know, for, for what they are, they're well taken care of, which is a good sign. I mean, we're good stewards of the money.
Yes, yes.
I guess, I guess I may, I mean, I'll ask, you know, I'll ask Jeremy, I mean, is, is this a population that votes yes on school bonds?
We'll get there. Well, I can't answer now because we have to ask them about the specific, we will do a poll on that, what specific price point, you know, it, the details matter, right? I will say that generally, people want to buy winners. So when it comes to investing something, if you have negative perceptions of the quality of education you're providing, it doesn't really matter how bad your buildings are. People aren't going to vote for you. Because they obviously don't, it, they, they combine these things. It's not just a building, it's, it's the education, it's the teachers, it's all together for most people's brains. So the, the response here to overall what you're providing as a district is a positive, very positive thing in terms of going out to a vote, because you're not having to make the case that you're worth the investment. Now it's going to be about making the case that the proposal and the school and the work you want to do is worth the investment, right? So that's good. I will say the one that's really jumped out at me in this, about the perception of facilities is that your parents have a really strong, it's not just the, like you said, people driving by, see the outside. Most people don't get to go inside our schools these days. But, you know, we have to, it's, it's, I, I really want to dive into that parent perception. And it's probably a case of my kid's school versus what they don't know, right? And so, you know, so that, that's an interesting one because typically we see that number flipped. Parents generally go, oh yeah, we need help. So that's going to be a challenge. This is going to be our work.
We have a large population, I think, of parents in this particular district, perhaps more than others, who may not view facilities as the most important part of education. I know a lot of people that feel that way personally. And so, you know, they don't care if their kids are taught in a barn as long as they're learning what they need to learn, right? And I'm exaggerating, but there's.
We heard that at the listing sessions.
There, there is, I think, a significant population in this district that have that perception in general, like, and I'm generalizing.
But, but, but in general, like, I mean, my, my, I asked a question, does the population vote yes? And I just, you know, Jeremy's answer was, you know, kind of, the people vote, people want to vote for winners and there's lots of positive energy, there's lots of positive responses to this district, so.
Yeah, right, I agree.
And I, and, and, you know, those are your yes voters. You're not, you know, you just, you go and you reach those. I mean, there's, and there's, he's got more information and more polling for us, but initially, I like what I see.
The data is so important for us right now in the early stages so we know where to zero in on our time and, and resources as a district. So I can't say that enough, how important it was to get this data initially, to kind of take the temperature of the district. I really think our challenge is how to build a narrative where, where every stakeholder can grab a little bit of a piece of it to connect to. And I think for our K-8 communities, because our buildings are taken care of for a lot by the community and they, they, they're beautiful, they really are. The problem is, is that they're not sustainable. And, and we've already gone to great lengths to say how much we value our K-8s as, as an integral part of what makes us Silverfalls and that we, all we want to do is hundred percent, you know, protect that. But, but we can't do that by wishing it into existence, that we have to build a narrative to communicate out what that dire need looks like. Because we have significant issues at every single one of our K-8s, whether it's a basement that floods or we have to cancel school or a roof that's barely hanging on. These are real, real problems. So we have to do, focus our time on how do we build that narrative where people can connect to it.
And we so appreciate all the parent and community help with all of the buildings and we need to be able to take care of it from a district level.
Good initial data.
Any other questions for Jeremy? Thank you so much, Jeremy. It's been a pleasure working with you so far and we'll see you at our next planning meeting.
Yep, see you soon. All right, thank you all. If you have any other questions, don't reach out. Okay, take care y'all.
Thank you, Jeremy. And just so you know, as a board, we meet every other week. Now it's, the meetings have been shifted to Wednesdays for ninety minutes to two hours. And that'll go on until, until we reach our goal.
All right. Well, let's move on then to six D, no, six C, the superintendent evaluation timeline. And Aaron has been coordinating this work, so I'm going to let him talk about the timeline and take it away, Aaron.
Dan, can you put that up so everybody can see? So as Jennifer mentioned, you know, we've been teaming up on how to, this is, I know she put a lot of work into this last year and how can we clean this process up? How can we streamline it to basically get this template dialed in to the point where it's, I hate to use the term boilerplate, but is, we just change dates every year cycle and, and make it accurate to, to just the year at hand rather than having to reinvent the wheel. And how are we going to do this? And what, what, what kind of feedback can we get? I think we've all agreed upon this year putting in the, the targeted feedback survey. You know, we've, we've heard of Scott's goals. And now I think we've got a great jump off point for a, a system to, to have a standardized evaluation timeline. And, and again, the hard work, I think, is we're almost done with it and we're going to have a, a really nice template for years to come. I've been working with Janet of Avila Medina, who, who, you know, we've all worked with here in our meetings during the superintendent eval process last year. She's been super helpful and invaluable to, to give us some feedback. But what I, what I started with was the, the, the template that we had last year. And you can see there's a lot of red, there's a lot of markups, there's some strike throughs. I've added some of the, the wording in red. Jennifer did as well on some of the verbiage and, and when we met the last time. Janet has added some of the dark red, it's a little hard to see up there, but some of the underline and some track notes over to the side. Under my last commentary that I had with her today, she got me the latest feedback. So I apologize, it's not super cleaned up, but I wanted to use you guys all to see the track changes that we've made on this agreement. So what I'd like to do is just kind of start from the top because it's today and we are a little bit, I wouldn't say behind, we're a little late to the process, but to the, late to the point where it's not going to really affect our timeline. Next year, this will be done sometime late in the summer so we can get into, and we'll be firing on all cylinders with this process. We'll have the goals already ready to go as we get into the school year. So.
Hold on just a second, Aaron. Dan, are you able to move the thingamajigger that's on the side?
I cannot, but Daniel, can you minimize it so that only the person speaking is in the thumbnail so that it doesn't block the far right column?
I can, if it's over here, I can do that. Is it registered in?
Yep, it's right there, Jonathan. So if you, that'll work.
Does that work?
That'll work.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you can see the first part is, is just the, we review the, tonight we're reviewing the evaluation process, standards and timelines to be used this school year. And as Scott has done, superintendent will also present their professional goals. And then tonight we'll also need to, to make a motion to adopt these, the, the timeline and also the goals here in open session. Next one would be the, next thing up is the interim check-ins. And these are all accurate dates for our upcoming meetings in, in, in the next few months. So our next one, given that we're late in September, would be November, then in December and January. The next major milestone here would be on the one nine February, or the January ninth meeting, is, is this is where we're putting in this year the targeted feedback. And this is a planning session at that meeting where we would discuss kind of the standards on what we'd like to evaluate Scott on with, with those folks we send out this survey. Now Janet will help us with this. OSBA has this all together. They have a process for helping boards to do this targeted feedback survey. We will just have a discussion and also try to determine the participants for this. Now there was some question that we, that I had to ask and clarify with Janet on was, do we need to do this in executive session? And, and her reply to me as I pull this up is, is no, we don't need to do that in, in executive session because there was some concern about, okay, do we mention names and is it getting granular to that level? And she said generally, like, when, when we're doing planning of this sorts, she said that district titles or district building departments are discussed in the selection process. And even if the names do come up, let's just say, you know, we want to make sure that we're sending this out to people who have deep interactions with Scott, that work with him on a day-to-day basis. Let's just say, hey, we're going to send it out to Dan. Like, let's just say we name it, Dan would be a good one as assistant superintendent. That's okay to talk about in open session because when this is collected by OSBA and they get the results back, the only thing we're going to see is blinded themes. We're not going to see individuals' exact words, right? So we're never going to see Dan's feedback of Scott. We're only going to see the themes that, that they will, they will help us with. No individual comments, only a summary of the results from OSBA. So in that planning, planning meeting, we'll identify which standards to be used in the TFS, we'll identify any potential survey participants and then create a survey, specific survey respondent timeline. So our timeline as we have there is at that one nine meeting, we'll do the planning. The very next week, the targeted feedback survey will, will go out to those participants and for a couple of weeks timeframe. And then again, those, those results will be collected by OSBA and most likely Janet helping us with that process. Next thing up on the docket is on the two six, or, this is not at a meeting, this is a milestone though, is that Debbie will send out evaluation documents, much like we did last year, but in a much more simplified format. She's actually making a Google Doc right now where each one of us could do our evaluations to each of the standards set forth, was it by COSA, correct? The superintendent stand for standards. We will do the rating, we'll do the numeric scoring like we did last year. We'll have basically two weeks to, to fill this, to fill this in. I'm going to make sure I made some changes or I made some suggestions here on this timeline as well. I said two twenty-two on the initial, initial date, but I think we can even pull that back to two seventeen. That would give us a few more days for Debbie to compile everything. And then what that will allow us to do with that Google Doc is we, we'll have those, you'll be able to see, we will be able to see everybody's comments and ratings to, to each of the standards like we did last year. And we'll be able to then, between the, the seventeenth and the twenty-seventh, which is when we come back and do the summative evaluation and collection and kind of share and have that discussion on Scott's evaluation, that's when we're going to do our homework. We're not going to sit here like we did last time for three hours and, you know, read through and what's the theme. Our expectation is we're going to have visibility to this ten days ahead of time. We need to come to that two twenty-seven meeting, doing our homework, coming with the themes for each one of the standards that we want to rate Scott on, okay? At that meeting, OSB will also provide, well, let me step, take a step back. Scott will also provide his self-evaluation on how he's done against his, his goals as you, as we present, as he presented tonight. Again, we will meet to discuss our individual evaluations. He'll do, like I said, Scott will do his own artifacts of Evan's performance, you know, to us on how he's done. We will do the rating, but we'll also see a summary of the results of the TFS. Now it can be done in an executive or an open session, but with the theme we've done and Scott's been open and transparent, it will be done in open session unless there's any objections to that.
No, I have a question though. So we do our individual evaluations before Scott gives us his self-evaluation?
Yes, because he's going to, we're going, we're going to evaluate him, he's also going to come and evaluate, and evaluate himself and present to us. It's almost done simultaneously in a way because we're going to do ours, he's going to do his, present to us on that date. And then we can have a discussion on, you know, how, how we feel his performance has been against the standards. The summary will, again, like I said, of the TFS will also be presented to us by OSBA. Janet did mention that it's important that, that that is done, that I think, believe the evaluations, how did she word it? That the TFS summary take place after the superintendent's self-evaluation. That was her suggestion. So yeah, that'll be, that'll be a, a very rich and busy meeting on the twenty-seventh. And then at that point, we will then, it says board chair designee will, will, will present a draft, we'll take the themes that we pulled out, just like we did kind of last year when Janet helped us out. We'll pull the themes together, we'll write up a thorough yet succinct, you know, paragraph type evaluation and that will take and collect everything that we have done in terms of the evaluation. It's, it's our chance to again, speak with one voice and that, we'll sum everything together and then we'll, 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 we'll share that with the superintendent. We'll get it done in, in March, in advance of the March thirteenth board meeting. And at that March thirteenth board meeting, we'll discuss the, and clarify the summative evaluation document. Now if there's any glaring changes, they, that can be discussed and need to be made at that time, but I think with our process being as open and, and our check-ins being as succinct as they've been in the, you know, and scheduled here, that I don't, I don't think we're going to have any major changes. I don't foresee any. So that'll be on the thirteenth of March. If you can scroll down a little bit more, Dan. At that point where there necessarily, it says to notify of extension or non-extension if applicable, basically he is auto-renewed unless we say otherwise on the thirteenth. Now I scratched out the last few lines because they were kind of redundant, but what I did put in is, now I don't think, unfortunately, I'm sorry, she, I But what I did put in is, now I don't think, unfortunately, I'm sorry, she, I, she didn't get the copy that I had sent, that you guys had all in your packet. But the last one that I had inserted after that, we scratched these last two. But would be that the superintendent reports continued progress on professional goals and evaluation standards to the board. Those check-in dates would be in April, May and June meetings for the board.
And we talked about that, would that be just the standards because the goals had already been completed for the year?
It could be the goals too, because I think that, I think it's important to include both. You know, we need to make sure that, you know, we're, he's continually, he's giving us the updates on things. And I'm sure that there's still more to be done on those.
Yeah, true.
So that'll kind of end the process would be through that June board meeting. And then in the summer, we would start that, you know, probably end of July or June again to have that timeframe.
That was our goal this year.
Yeah. But, but we're okay. And Janet assured me, and as I kind of worked backward with the dates, that there was no, that we were, she said we were totally on, on, on time for everything, so.
Yeah, and I think just, it would be good if we could start the discussion earlier. Because then we'd have more time between check-ins so that we can, it, it, it would be more authentic, I think, if we had more time.
Yep, yep.
Maybe steps.
So I know there's a lot of edits and there's a lot of dates in here. But again, we wanted to kind of show the progress of where we were, how, where we've come. But any questions, input, comments, thoughts? This is, this is our time to discuss this. And love to hear from any and all of you.
I had a comment or suggestion for 2-6.
Okay.
Dan, can you pull it down there?
Yep.
So we wrote, no specific areas of feedback should be written into the evaluation. That hasn't already been discussed with the superintendent in person. Reflecting on that, and we kind of discussed it as a team when we met in preparation for this meeting. I, I don't love it that it starts with no, because as a teacher, we like to describe the positive words instead of the negative. So I have a suggestion for that. What if we said something like, this is a summative evaluation reflecting feedback already communicated throughout the cycle. The superintendent should not be surprised. Because I think that in-person piece, I think it's kind of a given that the feedback needs to probably happen during those check-ins, you know? So that's obviously going to be in-person. So anyway, I just, I changed the words in my own mind on that. And I wanted to see if folks were okay with that statement.
I like it better. I think it's fair.
I think it's fine. I mean, you could even just flip the sentence. You could just say, specific areas of feedback should have already been discussed with the superintendent in person.
Yeah, that's true. Any other thoughts that folks who are online, I cannot see, I'm sorry, still have not developed a great solution?
We can, we can expand that if you want.
I, I, I can do it here. So, nope, not seeing any.
Hopefully it's fairly straightforward. But again, I think we've got a good template now and next year will be much easier.
I just want to say thank you to Aaron because it is, this is pretty complicated and, you know, adding is the new thing every year. It's like, we feel like we haven't really gotten our finger on this process yet because we're, we're expanding it every year. So this is by far the most complicated piece. And I appreciate you working with Janet to, to get it.
It's also great to see the progress, Jennifer, because you really spearheaded this the past two years. And I've seen firsthand how hard you and Aaron have worked on this. And Aaron, of course, he and I are working closely on this as well, so.
We just wanted to make it simple, you know? And then again, it was the addition of the TFS. We just want to make this as easy as possible, you know? And clear and not so convoluted. And I think we're there.
Thank you.
So I've got a question. We've got three straight months of interim progress reports, kind of compressed into November, December, January.
That's, yeah.
It seemed odd to me, I guess. I don't know that I, as a board member, need one every month. So I'm curious what the thinking was there.
I think that's what we did last year. Well, we did September 13th, November 8th and January 10th. And it probably, I'm assuming that, I'll let Aaron speak because he's the one who chose the dates. But it has to do with our hard date for our summative and then how early we got started on this, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I, I just, again, and the desire to be thorough, I, I put each meeting on there. Now, if we think that's overkill, let's, let's adjust it. I am, again, open to any and all feedback. If we don't need it every month, I'm.
I don't think we do.
I think that the three is ideal when we start in June or July. When we start in July, three is ideal. But I think two would be acceptable as long as we remember to come back again and.
Yeah, yeah. No.
Because we could have like.
I mean, I don't have any beef with the order. I just had a question about how many times does he have to present updates to us?
We could do it twice a month.
As many as you wish. I'm your humble servant.
Each meeting, including worse sessions. No, just kidding. So how does everybody feel about, since we're presenting tonight, we're at the end of September? Would the first one be November and then we go to January, skip December? Does everybody feel okay with that?
I'm perfectly willing to skip in December.
Okay. I will skip December, then I will scratch that out. Now, fast forward down to the bottom, since we're on the subject, do we maybe scratch out May and just do April and June?
Oh, for the continuing ones.
Now, it was on your board book one. This one's a little different because I wanted to see Janet's feedback, so I apologize.
So, so describe to us what you have.
So it, so basically after the 3-13 meetings, another box that says superintendent reports continued progress on professional goals and evaluation standards to the board. And I had dates of April, May and June board meetings. Again, might be overkill. Maybe we just do April and June?
April and June, sound good to me.
Okay, I will take that out. I will take the 5-8 meeting out.
Janet and Laurie, I just wanted to make sure that you guys know that you can raise your hand and we, we see you. Okay, Janet gave the thumbs up in the dark.
We even saw that.
Yeah.
I don't know where my thumbs up is, but I'm okay with everything. Okay, thank you.
Thanks Laurie.
So that's where we're at. And then we will get a, I will clean this up, get it off to Debbie and to all of you, just for your review. But that's, it sounds like we're on a good track. And I think it's, it'll set us up for the next year, this year and next year very nicely.
And we will want to vote on this tonight, plus the standards, which were included in the packet, same standards we've used for the last two years and the goals. Though all three of those are kind of like the evaluation package.
So the vote effectively is agreeing to the process. He's going to send out a clean-up version. We're basically approving or affirming the process, the goals, you know, the standards, yeah.
The goals, the standards and, yes, and the, and the timeline.
I'm comfortable with that.
All right.
Thank you.
Then the next discussion item is 6D, Board Superintendent Operating Agreement. And we met last time to talk about this item. We reviewed the working agreement that we've been working under. And to summarize, folks generally were agreeable that we could continue on with that. We did have a discussion around potentially adding one more item. And Janet volunteered to draft something up. And so now we can hear from Janet if she's available.
I am, but I wonder, would you be willing to read it Jennifer, just so that it's clear?
I will. I have to locate it on my.
I have it up.
Oh, go ahead. Why don't you read it?
In the interest of public transparency and full robust debate, board members will endeavor to actively engage in and contribute to board discussions and to share their perspectives on topics before the board. Full participation from members in advance of a vote supports the board in making informed, well-considered decisions on important district matters.
Really good.
Well said.
So I, I'll provide a little bit of context for us to remember that, that we were trying to capture without being overly prescriptive or sort of, you know, passively punitive, preemptively punitive in our language to say, hey, the more that we can discuss our perspectives, even when they're contrary to perhaps, or maybe even especially when they're contrary to the majority of the opinion, that's how we go about making very well-thought-out decisions and make sure that we have all of the information before us. So I tried to capture that in a way that felt still very positive, but I absolutely welcome your edits. I will probably just mute for a little bit here, but welcome any edits or word smithing that you all, I think to do.
I just want to say how much I appreciate Janet's contribution. I, I think it's an outstanding addition. And thank you Janet for taking the time to work on that.
Yep.
I agree. I think it's worded beautifully. And I think that if that had been in the working agreement that I had, or that was in, in effect when I first got on the board, I might have spoken up a little bit more. Because it, it really is inviting us to speak up, even if our opinion might be a little different than everybody else's.
Yeah, thank you Janet. I think that was a great addition.
All right, well, any other thoughts, any objections?
Not here.
All right, well, I'm going to suggest then that we, after 6E, that we do have action on adopting the working agreement along with the, the other items for superintendent evaluation. Like that could be two separate things.
Two separate motions?
Two separate, yeah. And then, so that moves us to 6E, Policy JHCD slash JHCPDA medications. And this is a first read. Staff, would you like to present?
Well, as I emailed you last week, this policy, we had adopted this March of 2020, 2022. And at the time, the board policy work group did look at this, this optional language around Narcan being in there. And, excuse me, we had a conversation about it, agreed that our nursing team and principals were not at a place to take on any more training about anything else because of being in COVID. But we did note that aspirationally, we would like to reconsider this. And then, you know, Aaron, you've shared with us your experience of a recent trip. And then also even local law enforcement sharing with you how important this is, that we have this available to, for our kids, patrons. Really, it's important to have and be made available. I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
So a friend of mine is a, is a police officer here in the area. And our kids actually went to school together at Evergreen. And he, he had written to me a couple of months back about, about how dangerous fentanyl is right now and new forms of it that are being out there. Not only are there pills that look like over-the-counter medications such as like oxycodone or Percocet or those kind of things that are laced with fentanyl, that are, you know, they're counterfeit. But now they have this new rainbow fentanyl that basically looks like sweet tarts or chalk, right? And it's so powerful and potent that grains of, grains of it, if you just inhale it, will give, will give you a reaction and can actually prove fatal. So I engaged Scott on this, you know, you know, after I discussed this with, with this gentleman and started talking down the road, what can we do to educate, what can we do, especially, you know, having Narcan in our schools? For those that don't know, Narcan's naloxone, it's basically stops and reverses the binding of the opioid at, you know, and it stops its effects literally within seconds. So basically, can, it will save somebody's life if you administer it. The great thing about Narcan too, is there's really no toxicity. I mean, you could, every one of us could have it, you know, administered to us right now, would do nothing to us because we don't have the opioid in our system. So fast forward to a couple of weeks ago, I, my wife and I were on a trip to San Diego. And we had, for those who have been to San Diego, gone to Old Town for lunch. And have a Hispanic influenced area, beautiful part of, of, of North San Diego. My wife stopped to use the restroom and I'm standing outside the, the public restroom. And a man walked in, kind of in front, in the sidewalk and just started shaking and convulsing his leg. And then he just, I looked at him like, I couldn't understand what was going on. I thought maybe he was having a seizure. Maybe he was, you know, had some kind of medical condition. Maybe he was just, you know, I, I didn't know what was going on. So I observed him for a minute or so and, and, and then he's, his right side just started shaking violently. Then he just plopped down to his backside and then just passed out. And I ran over to him because it was raining at the time down there. So I went over and covered him with, you know, my umbrella and just said, hey, are you okay? Are you okay? You know, and then I saw he had a pipe with a foil that he had been smoking something up to that point. Fast forward, we called over, because it's a state park, called over to the ranger who, who had his truck over at the, at a really close nearby building. Brought his truck over to the gentleman, tried to wake him up. And, and could tell that he had taken some type of opioid, probably fentanyl. He was saying, we see it all the time around here. Went to his truck, grabbed the Narcan. This, this gentleman unfortunately was, as I was waiting for this ranger to get there, was gasping for air. And I was just monitoring to make sure he could breathe, but he was, his eyes were rolled back, he was barely breathing. He was on his path to, to death. Ranger got there, went back, grabbed his Narcan from his truck, shot it, and it's a nasal spray. But, you know, just administered a, a, a spray up into, up into the guy's nose. About 30 seconds later, he was back. And he was, he was definitely not, not real coherent, but he was alive, he was breathing, he was able to say his name. He was able to confirm, yes, he took a, hit a fentanyl. And, but, but had that not been there, he probably would have died. I would, I'm certain he would have died. You could see it in the man, he was on death's door. So I, I, I got a massive wake-up on the, I hate to use the term miracle because it's sad that we have to use this. But in a way, in this way, Narcan is a miracle. It can literally bring people back from the dead. And it, and with the no toxicity and the ease of administration, it's not intravenous, it's not an injection. It's literally a quick nasal spray that takes half a second to administer. Any one of us could administer it. A child could administer it, God forbid. So I talked to Scott and said, look, we, we got to do something. I literally just saw a man be brought back from the dead because of Narcan. So it's a sad epidemic we have. We only know it's on the rise. Yeah, I saw a statistic my wife shared with me. It's one of the, it's the leading cause of, this is like the leading cause of death. And I want to get it right between, I think, 18 and 45 right now in the United States. Okay? This can literally save a student, a staff member's life if we have this at our schools. So I don't mean to go off on it, but it was a powerful impact on, it made a huge powerful impact on me. And I called Scott shortly thereafter saying, look, we got to get this fast-tracked. So, yeah, that's where this kind of really spearheaded, so.
So the, if you had a chance to look at the actual recommended policy, it includes specific language around the Narcan.
Yeah, so what I sent you, and then it's posted on board book, the language in green was originally crossed out when we adopted it in March. So we're just bringing the OSBA language back. And so I did highlight in green to highlight so you could see what was changing. We had a brief team meeting this morning and, and so we will want to get our nurses working on this. If, you know, if we follow the normal chain of timing, this would get, you know, up for a third read in November. But we thought that if our nursing team was ahead of the game, you know, to Aaron's point about this being, you know, being, you know, could save someone's life, that we would either adopt it, recommend it's adopted. that we would either adopt it, recommend its adoption after a second read or possibly at a work session, so we're not waiting. So, we do have some training to do on our ends, and nursing has some, has some work to do, but if we can get it done sooner than six weeks from now, which would, you know, we would want it, we would want it adopted sooner.
I would be in favor of, one of the rare times of kind of declaring a public emergency or an emergency and adopting without three reads. I know we've talked about reasons for three reads, and I'm in favor of that, but I think, to me, this weren't an exception in that we could just adopt it and do it now rather than later.
Yeah, I, I don't see any reason to wait.
I don't see neither.
You'll get no argument here. I don't have a personal story, but I've, I actually recently read or heard about, it was a, maybe a maintenance staff or janitor that accidentally came into contact or something and died or nearly died. I mean, it was something similar to whatever I'm saying. It was just completely unintentional contact with the substance. And it's just really crazy how it can mess you up quick.
And that's the danger of this new stuff that, again, this police officer friend of mine alerted me to, like, this stuff is, just a bit of the dust off this rainbow fentanyl can, can kill you.
Right, I'm not hearing any objections, so we can add that to our list of action items that aren't on the agenda.
Can I ask, and I don't want to get too much in the weeds, Dan, and maybe this is for another discussion about, like, will, will there be more updates on who, once this is adopted, who has the fentanyl, where it's at? Will you let us know the updates?
Yeah.
On that?
Yeah, we'd love to be, bring back a report from where it's all at and, you know, maybe have one of our nurses come in and do a, do a talk-through. That'd be great.
I'd love to have the opportunity to have our nurses, or one of our nurses in because they have earned their pay the past couple of years.
Yes.
Yes.
Show our appreciation for them.
Yep.
All right, well, let's then move on to our six and a half, which is our list of action items. Let's start with the Board Superintendent Working Agreement. Is there a motion around that?
I move that we adopt Janet's augmented language and add it to our existing working agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Janet's augmented language and, and add it to our existing working agreement. Any discussion? All right, Dan?
Okay, Janet?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, and let's go to the next imaginary action item on our agenda, which is to approve the Superintendent Evaluation Cycle Goals and Standards. Is there a motion?
Is that the end? All right, I move that we adopt the timeline, standards, and goals that we've discussed tonight with any changes that we discussed tonight regarding the timeline.
I don't think I'm gonna be able to read that back. Oh, second? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, as we moved and seconded that we adopt the timeline, goals, and standards that we discussed tonight with the relevant changes that we also discussed tonight.
Bingo.
Go ahead and read the, take the roll.
Janet?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
All in favor?
And finally, let's talk about Policy J H C D and J H C D A Medications.
I'd like to move to adopt J, Policy J H C D slash J H C D A Medications. Not only adopt it and put it and approve it without, on our first read, and put it into policy without a second or third reading.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt the suggested policy J H C D and J H C D A on the first read. Kind of summarized what you said. All right. Is there a second?
All right, Janet?
He's seconded it.
Yes.
Uh, Lori?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, so without objection, we will adjourn.
Thank you all.
Thank you.